Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Saginaw City Council. We will be led in prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance tonight by Councilmember Clint Bryant.
Let's pray. Our precious Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us here tonight to discuss the business of the city of Saginaw. I pray that you would keep everyone in our community safe. We know that the warmer weather is upon us and that brings a whole new set of challenges for us in this community. Father God, I pray that you would just build up a hedge around our community and keep every single member of the staff and every citizen of our city safe. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Thank you Mayor. Councilmember Forbes.
Present.
Councilmember Bryant.
Present.
Councilmember Bench is excused. Mayor Pro Tem.
Present.
Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Miller.
Present.
Councilmember Ball.
Present.
Councilmember Ostache.
Present.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Eight members present and one excused.
Good evening. Because this is a public meeting, we ask that all members of the audience please remain quiet and refrain from speaking, interrupting, or otherwise disrupting the meeting. Also, this is a good time to remind everyone, perhaps those especially up here at council, to please turn off or silence all electronic devices. Thank you.
Thank you Mayor. We are at announcements. I do have a couple. The 2019 Yard Waste Service began today. So this week, your collection date is the same day as your regular trash day, and your yard waste materials must be in paper yard waste bags or 35 gallon container, not weighing more than 50 pounds. And it must have a yard waste sticker fixed on the front of it. These stickers are available in the city clerk's office. Also, the city compost site has opened today. And the hours for the season are Monday through Friday, 7 o'clock a.m. to 3 o'clock p.m. Saturday hours are 8 a.m. to 12 noon during the months of April and May. Mayor, that takes us to public input.
Thank you. The purpose of -- well, we back up here. The welcome to all those who have signed up to address council tonight. Thank you for sharing with us your thoughts and input. Hearing from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you have to say. When called to the podium, please introduce yourself and state your home address. Let us know if you'll be speaking solely for yourself or as -- or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk, so be sure to cover your main points. We ask that your presentation be courteous and respectful to all -- to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching SGTV, and to the council so we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to city staff. Thank you.
Our first speaker, Christopher Kubiak, did cancel his appearance late after the deadline. Therefore, our first speaker tonight will be Betty Holmes.
Welcome.
Good evening, council. My name is Betty Holmes. My address is 1810 North Carolina Street in Saginaw. My reason for being here is I'm trying to -- I've been dealing with Ms. Linda in the county and assessing's office about the taxes, my house, about the building at 1215 East Genesee, which was the former Lime Light Club. I purchased that building from the land bank and we did renovation on it and was opening two years ago for adult respite service, which serviced disabled mentally challenged residents in the city of Saginaw. Pretty much daycare setting for the residents in Saginaw who and caregivers of parents and loved ones who have their loved ones at home. And that's what we was opening the building for. We are listed as a nonprofit organization. Every year, we've been taxed for that property. And every year, I come and talk to Ms. Linda Armin Stroop. I don't know if I'm saying her name correctly, but she's in the assessor's office here in the city, in the city hall. And every time I come to address the issue with her, she can never give me nothing in writing as to why I'm being taxed. Then a couple of times I've came, she told me that the reason why she keep taxing me is because I'm not using enough water. And I asked her, can I see that in writing? Do I have to use so much water every day? She can't give me nothing on that. Then I came back again. She told me that the time she come to visit my facility, there's no one there. And then I need to give her a schedule of the times that we are there. And I don't know what that has to do with anything. I'm just trying to find out, am I obligated to pay taxes as a nonprofit or not pay taxes?
That will be referred to city staff as previously indicated, and they will hopefully be able to get back with you in the near future.
Okay. And then I have one more issue. I have two adult foster care homes, and I'm being double taxed for trash. I don't have no more trash than -- my neighbors have more trash than me at all times. I have four bags of trash, maybe two containers, and I'm trying to find out why am I being double taxed for trash removal?
Again, that will be referred to staff.
Okay.
Right? Thank you.
Our next speaker is DeShawn Hayes.
Thanks for having me today. I come to you guys today, me, myself, and Arturo. We have partnered together to start a movement here in Saginaw called the Spotted Snag It Movement, as well as Project Saginaw, which is an initiative to basically take the reins and stop complaining as citizens about our pollution problem and the litter that's pretty much everywhere. I mean, you can't miss it. No matter where you go, it's everywhere. So like I said, we took the initiative. Like I said, we're young. I'm 30. He's in the same age group. Got tired of just watching, watching, watching. Everyone talks about it, everyone. To the point, we started, we have two cleanups. With the first one, we had 40 people there. On the second cleanup, we had 80 people. That was in three days. So the first cleanup was on Wednesday. The second cleanup we had was on a Saturday. So we doubled our numbers in a few days. I basically come forth and ask you guys if there's anything you can do as far as helping us spread the word in the school system, maybe, I'm not even sure. But really, just trying to get -- trying to get the word out to the youth. There, you know, this is a really big deal. It's the easiest thing that we can do as citizens to be productive in this city. It's hands-on, doesn't cost any money, doesn't matter what tax bracket you're in, doesn't matter what age group you're in as well, religion, none of that matters. It's, you know, I'm trying to, I'm coming, like I said, ask you guys if there's anything you can do, any assistance you guys can lend us. Our next cleanup will be, what is it, the 7th? It's a whirlwind. April 7th, we'll be cleaning up on Washington out front of St. Mary's. Our main goal first is to hit up all of the heavy traffic areas where people are coming in and out of our city. They're seeing the trash in our city, and, you know, they're either seeing it when they come into town, or they're seeing it on their way out. Like I said, I'm just here trying to see what we can do together, trying to see, you know, what you guys have in mind as well to help us, so.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
We appreciate your efforts, and we will refer to city managers if there can be something done to help you.
Okay.
Next speaker is Arturo Lopez.
Good evening, council. My name is Arturo Lopez, and I live on 3283 Shus Road in Saginaw, Michigan. And thank you for inviting me, and I'm here today to explain pretty much what DeShawn just said. We started individually, we started a movement. He started Spotted Snag It, and then I started Project Saginaw. But then, we just united, you know, we became one team because the target is one, you know, to get Saginaw cleaned up. I was born and raised in Mexico. I've been here since I started high school. And thankfully, last year, I became a U.S. citizen. And Saginaw is my home. I don't even consider my hometown in Mexico, you know, my home. But this is my home, so I don't like to see it, you know, dirty. I do see a lot of trash on the overpass and Saginaw, everywhere I go to work. And I really don't like to see it like that. Also, I would like this movement to be a, like, an ongoing thing for throughout the year. I don't want it to be just one time, you know, so it doesn't look just like one-time cleanup. And so, we've talked to different companies that are going to help us out here and there, you know, but companies sometimes, they're going to get tired of it. You know, like the dumpster companies, they're going to get tired of it. They, a company just agreed to, to help us by taking the trash that we accumulate for cleanups, but maybe later down the year, they're going to say, no more, you know. So if we can have access to a city dump or something like that, we'll be greatly appreciated. I know it may be hard, but we want to make sure that this city gets cleaned up good. You know, maybe it gets cleaned up really good that we can go and help another city out. It's just sad to see like everything that's going on all over the world, you know, in the rivers, you know. I see videos of rivers going down with tons of trash all over it. I don't want that for my Saginaw River, you know. So I just want to make sure that we all come together, Saginaw as a whole, and we do something for the city.
Very good. Thank you, mister.
Thank you.
Our final speaker tonight is Erica Brownheinz. Do not see her coming forward.
Okay.
That takes us to remarks of council.
Thank you, Madam Burke. I'd like to remind council of the three-minute time limit, and tonight, we will begin with Councilmember Bryant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to start off by saying thank you so much to Arturo and DeShawn. I first got a chance to meet Arturo last year at the Beautification Day Project. Since then, he's been through the Great Lakes Bay Hispanic Leadership Institute out of Saginaw Valley, and he's just really blossomed as an individual and as a community leader. So I'm so proud of him, and thank you guys both for joining us tonight and all the work that you do, and really just inspiring our community that it's not just on one day or a weekend, but it's an everyday thing. Being a good citizen is something that we have to do every single day, so.
Thank you.
So much. I just wanted to touch on a couple events that I had the privilege to attend. First would be the MML Conference. We had our full delegation to the city council there, and that was absolutely wonderful. I had a chance to moderate my first session for the Equity and Inclusion, and that was great. That was really, really good. I look forward to working with them as well as potentially serving on the EOA Board, the Elected Officials Academy Board, so I'm really excited about that. I did have the chance to attend the citywide meeting. That was very good. And I did want to let residents in the community know, my next community conversation will be April 24th, and that's going to be at Cruz Kitchen, 1200 Martha Street, from 5 to 7. So we'll be working on that. That'll be a great time, usually good to talk about what's going on in the city. Have a couple tacos as well. Nobody usually complains about that. But also, I just wanted to let my council members know and residents of the community that Alice Report has come out for 2019 in Michigan, and it's good. When we service residents in the community and have conversations with MML or other places that were using facts, so that is available on the United Way website. And I did receive a follow-up with the manager after the meeting, but I did receive a couple calls about the non-owner occupied ordinance, so that's all I have, though. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, Forbes.
Thank you. Thanks to our speakers for coming and sharing their thoughts tonight. Mr. Hayes and Mr. Lopez, watching your work on the last, the last few weeks on social media has been really exciting, and I'm excited to get involved with one of your cleanups soon. Like I commented on your status and like we talked about Hispanic leadership, this is a small enough community that a couple of people can really make change happen. And you plugged into your spot, and I just think you're such good examples of how magical it is to find that right place, right? So I'm definitely going to come to one of your cleanups soon, and I invite the rest of my neighbors to come too. I'd like to mimic the words of Councilman Bryant and say that the MML Capitol Conference was really informational. I'm really excited to bring some of those learnings back to our city. And I'd also like to congratulate Mayor Pro Tem Brenda Moore on her graduation from the fourth level of her MML Elected Official Training, and I'm looking forward to taking some of those courses too and hopefully learn what I need to learn. So I appreciate that. And that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
You. Councilman Ostache.
Good evening. I'm going to start off too, congratulations to DeShawn and also to Arturo. I was on social media, I saw DeShawn one day, and I recognized him from the YMCA, and I kind of was checking what he was doing. And so that's kind of how we all became friends, so just congratulations. I applaud your efforts in the city, and even in my neighborhood, we always grab a bag and walk around and pick things up too, because we have a lot of stuff blowing around. Another thing I want to bring up too is congratulations to three people on council, Councilwoman and Mayor Pro Tem Brenda Moore, Autumn, and also Jamie Forbes. They received an award for Champion of Peace and Nonviolence, and this was given out by the top ladies of distinction for the National Women's History Month. So congratulations to my colleagues. Another thing, another thing is too, is that, another thing that was happening on Facebook was, I just want to give a shout out to the, for our city. There was a post about the Lee Mansion, but it kind of, I kind of thought people would have been talking about the restoration of this house, but they didn't. What they started talking about was moving into the city of Saginaw. So they're seeing so many good things that are happening here with all of our development downtown, and they started talking about actually moving their families here. So I thought that was really positive for our city, because a lot of times, we've always had a lot of negative press. So I just wanted to share that with everybody tonight, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ball.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hey, I too would like, my sentiments are the same for the people who's doing the cleanup in the city of Saginaw. You know, I honestly believe that the service we give to others is the rent that we pay to be here on God's earth, and if we all done that, it'd make it a better place to everybody. I'm looking forward to you guys coming to my neighborhood, and my Neighborhood Association don't beat you to the punch, but we got a cleanup coming up in our neighborhood too. But you guys are more than welcome to come, and I guarantee we have refreshments for you there too. I'll tell you after the meeting. Okay. But it's in the Delray neighborhood. But anyway, I really, you know, appreciate what you guys are doing in the city. We had a lot of volunteers doing a lot of different things in the city of Saginaw. It makes the wheel turn when everybody gives from themselves, and I really appreciate you guys for doing that. I too attended the MML Conference, and it was really a beautiful conference to see our fellow councilwomen. Brenda Moore received the highest award that can be given from the MML. She received that, and she did a good job of receiving it too. The one that let everybody know that she was pretty, really elated about getting it. And we all feel good about that too. But on another serious note, you know, being involved in MML and finding out what all the cities can do and all the resources that can come back here. Well, Brenda's going to be the president of the organization in a few months, and I'm sure she's going to help get some resources here to the city of Saginaw to help out with some things, beautification of the city of Saginaw. So Brenda, we thanking you in advance for the money that you're going to be sending back to Saginaw. I would like to let the gentleman know too that we have the county commissioner here too, and he probably can help out with that cleaning too. I've got Mr. Mike Westrow over here too. Just want to let you know, you can ask him for some trash bags too. And we got some union people here too, I'm sure that they help out too. Ms. Miller is sitting right behind him, and she'd be more than willing to help out there, so. There's a lot of people in here that want to help out the community, man, so you guys just keep plugging along, and I'm guaranteed you're going to get it right. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. Just to make it unanimous, I was also at the MML Conference, so. Everyone's covered the details pretty well. Attended with Mayor Clark, the Samaritas Senior Living Grand Reopening. Everyone may know that as the former Luther Manor, and they have turned that into a full-service rehab and short- and long-term care facility. Really fantastic job, great investment in the city of Saginaw. Want to pass along the information, one sad note, we lost a former police captain. Charlie Mason passed away last week. He was, I think, about 30 years with the department, and he was here for the transition from when the police department was here to their new station downtown. Another beautiful performance from the Saginaw spirit, four-game sweep in their first round of the playoffs, and they're selling the place out. It is packed every night for those games, and they're back on Friday. So I will be there. Speaking of good press for the city, we're getting very good press about the Agebway Island updates. I've been in the local press, both print and TV about that project. It's coming up, should all be done for some big events on the island this summer. Just a note for the young gentleman working on the cleanup. If you were able to coordinate your cleanup, the second Saturday of every month, our city convenience station is open to dispose of what you clean up. You're just going to need to make sure you have one city member on your cleanup staff with your truck or trailer, and they can take it directly. Hope that's helpful. And I believe that's all I have to say.
Okay. Councilmember Scherzer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too just want to mirror my colleagues and tell DeShawn and Arturo that what you're doing is not going unseen, so just know, if you don't think people are watching, they're watching. But it really takes grassroots efforts like what you're doing to make change, so hats off to you. You'll see me, hopefully, on the 7th. I plan on being there, so. And I have some organizations, I'm thinking right off the top of my head, that would love to get involved. So one good thing about council, we're involved heavily in our community, so I challenge my other colleagues to reach out to their organizations that are involved, let's get involved with you. I attended, I attended MML with everybody else, but also I was in attendance with the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, at the Saginaw Chamber of Commerce 156th Annual Meeting this past week. Also was at the citywide Neighborhood Association. That was great information that was shared. And thank you, Councilman Ostache, for your remarks with Councilwoman Forbes and Mayor Pro Tem about the award, so we appreciate it. And thank you to the top ladies of distinction for that honor. Just a couple of things coming up this weekend. Hopefully, you can come out. The Our Kids World Family Fun Day is being held at the Saginaw YMCA this weekend on the 6th. It is a free event. It is also co-hosted with the Soaring Eagle Water Park and the Salt Room. So that's from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. on Saturday, so if you have young kids, or if you just want to be a kid for a day, please, I'm sure they would love to have you. And then lastly, the NAACP Community Meeting is this Sunday at New Christ Community Church. That's 3302 Grant Street, and it is hosted by the Iota Chi Lambda Chapter of Alpha Phi Alpha. So if you have nothing to do on Sunday afternoon, please come out and support the NAACP. And lastly, go green.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Good afternoon. First of all, I'd like to thank the presentators who presented. It is always exciting to see young people do. So many young people can find negative things, but to find some young people doing positive here, kudos. Kudos. So I got something to go back to mention to tell them. Our young people in Saginaw cleaning up. I'd like to thank all of my colleagues for attending with me MML Conference. It was a real good night. On the night I got the award, it was so fulfilling to see my family as well as my cohorts in the room, so that was really, really a nice activity. To answer your question, Mr. Ball, I'm already working on money now. I've been working on money ever since this venture started. In September, I will become the president, and so at that point, I'm hoping that they give me grace and mercy and give us some money. Last week, I attended the Caesar Shavas luncheon. That was a beautiful affair. I also attended the Chamber of Commerce meeting on Friday. My week is full of meetings, meetings, meetings. Do I mind? No, I don't. No, I don't. The good part about it is, is when you can look at people and you can feel good about seeing the growth. Saginaw is moving in the right direction. We are growing. So with the help of all of the citizens who pay attention to what we're doing and who don't pay attention, if you stay around something long enough, my mother always said, if you hang around long enough, you'll pick it up. So if that paper stay on that ground long enough, you're going to get tired, you're going to pick that paper up. So once again, I thank our community. I think our community is fabulous. All I do is talk about Saginaw, Saginaw, Saginaw. So I just want y'all to know that they got bumpers at, where was it? Hozbeck. Hozbeck has a bumper sticker that says, "I love Saginaw." So Hozbeck Pickle on Hess Street, you can stop by there telling, "Hey, I heard about your bumper sticker. I love Saginaw. Go get one." Thank you.
Thank you. Few things. I do want to thank all my fellow councilmembers for attending the MML Conference. It was an important opportunity, both for both informational purposes and to network with our legislators. And I had the opportunity to attend a, some sessions myself, including capitalizing on local assets and economic development, opportunity zones, and I also had an opportunity to meet with several legislators, as well as our Lieutenant Governor, and particularly on the issue of what I'm sure is top on many people's minds in Saginaw is the poor condition of our roads and the need for additional funding from the state for the purpose of being able to improve our roads. So that was a great opportunity to be able to meet with both the legislators to discuss it, as well as Lieutenant Governor. The, I do want, before I forget, I want to mention, congratulations to our Mayor Pro Tem as well for your achievement. I think that's really phenomenal and excellent. We, I recently, it was just last week, attended the Hispanic Business Association meeting and had an opportunity to discuss entrepreneurial opportunities in Saginaw, and I think that was a very beneficial opportunity for me to meet the Hispanic community members, as well as the business members in that community, because there's plenty of opportunities for entrepreneurship in our town, and I'm glad that they're interested, and hopefully that'll come forward. I want to mention, on Saturday was a recent concert, Saginaw Bay Symphony Orchestra had their concert, which was featured both the Symphony Orchestra and about 120 choral members from both Saginaw Valley and the Saginaw Choral Society. It was a great concert for anybody who is interested. The next one is on June 1st. June 1st. Then, I do want to mention, our speakers today were featured in the Saginaw News for their cleaning up of the city. And I think people should take note of that. So also, if you want to look at it, it'll be on in live. So we, I want to thank anybody, particularly our two speakers today, for your efforts. Keep it up. It's greatly appreciated by the city. Let's see. I think that is all I have to cover. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. That takes us to the reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you. And first, I wanted to mention that all of councilmembers are either scheduled for or have gone on a tour of the Delta College Center. And we may have mentioned this at the event, but Delta College and SVRC are working together to have an event this summer. It'll be the one-year anniversary for the SVRC and dedication for the Delta College Center. Right now, they're asking that you hold June 22nd, if you're interested in attending that. They did invite the governor, so they're waiting to see if she can attend, but I think that date is becoming firmer as it approaches regardless. And also, since some councilmembers asked about it at the last meeting, at our agenda review meeting today, we did get an update. Vicki Davis has been working on the planning for the town hall meeting, so we went over that with the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, talked about what speakers and location and timing. So it looks like we're probably about a month out for that, but we're going to try to line up some of those, the location and some of the speakers to make sure that all lines up. But I think we're looking at about a month from now for that event. And a few councilmembers were at And a few councilmembers were at the Chamber of Commerce Annual Meeting, and I think it was a good event. I'm glad they could attend. And I thought, if you've been the last few years, there's been a focus on Saginaw companies and their story, how it's come about and their history. We've had Spence Brothers, Garber Management Group, Morley Companies, and I thought this year was really good. Tim Hausbeck was the speaker in Hausbeck Pickle. Thought that was a really good story he told about their need for expansion, and I think it was clear from his presentation that they could have pretty much gone anywhere in the Midwest and they did stay in the city. And I was surprised at how many clients they do have in the, I believe he called it, the quick service food industry. But a big thing that he did announce is that they are planning a 100,000-square-foot project that they will be doing, I believe, this summer. And it was also really informative to see the projects that they have there. He mentioned some of their shipping, and as he talked about the flexible packaging, you could see the projects with which, I remember, we did write a letter of support for them to get a grant for some of that equipment. So, it's great to see that some of those projects come through that we do work with companies on. And Saginaw Future did work pretty extensively with Hausbeck Pickle on a lot of these projects as well. So, that was good to see. We do have, I thought that was a great story that Deshaun and Arturo told, and it fits in with a lot of the volunteer work that we have in the city and some of the investment from outside organizations that they're looking at doing downtown and in our parks, and what's already been done in the parks. As councilmembers know, and I was reading today, looking at cities throughout the state of Michigan, most cities have decreased their operating budget probably by anywhere from 12% to 20%. That's not to say that their general fund has gone down by that level, but their operating has, because those dollars are now committed to OPEB and pension costs. So, when you see that, you do see a decrease in street sweeping possibly, you see decreases in parks and recreation activities. So, it's been great to see in Saginaw, a lot of citizens step up and take on that role. So, we appreciate that help. And with that, that leads into our first presentation as well. Phil Karwak has been working with a lot of different groups with projects for parks. He's been working with the People for the Fitness Court and the National Fitness Campaign for quite some time, and they are very interested in Saginaw. So, if you haven't heard about it, it's a pretty neat project, and I think their tagline is "Bringing Free Fitness to 200 Cities by 2019." So, with that, I'll turn it over to Phil.
Thank you, Tim. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Manager, City Staff. Yeah, as Tim stated, I'm gonna try to be brief and short with this, but we have been, the Public Service Department, working with Saginaw County Parks, has been working with this National Fitness Campaign out of San Francisco for probably over a year now to try to bring, it's pretty much an outdoor body weight fitness court. And the video's gonna show you a lot of information that I don't necessarily need to talk about. Basically what it is, it's about a 38-foot by 38-foot concrete pad with a rubberized material on it and some non-mechanical, you know, type of, you'll see in the video, different pull-ups or everything now with Healthy Living and all these fitness groups that are out trying to bring healthy living to Saginaw free. We're looking at putting this thing in Celebration Square, Celebration Park, over by the skateboard area, by the splash pad area. I think it'd be a great fit over there. We haven't done much fundraising for it yet. We have started a little bit. The overall project estimated cost is about $175,000. That's for a complete. That's the excavation, the install of the concrete, all the equipment. Very little to no maintenance. As you'll see in the video, there's not a whole lot there that needs to be maintained, so there'd be minimal to no maintenance costs. We will be working this project, if approved by council, through the Saginaw Community Foundation. Last year, August, we brought a fiscal sponsorship agreement in front of you. It's called the Healthy Living Fiscal Sponsorship. That was kind of the spur. If you remember, Dow Corning had given some money to the community foundation, I think about $1 million, but $100,000 of that was designated to the Saginaw County. So, we've been working with Brian Leckel to pick projects, and this was, you know, almost a year ago, or just over half a year ago now. One of the projects was this, so we currently have $30,000 towards the project. Part of the resolution also explains that the fitness campaign itself will provide a $30,000 grant towards the project. So, of the 175,000 total project, we so far have 60,000, so we'd be looking to raise about another 115. Part of working with National Fitness Campaign, it's just not, not only do they provide the equipment and all that and the construction specifications, but they also work with us to provide, to get, you know, to receive the money for this. So, they got, I mean, it's a huge, they'll work with us to work with local sponsors that may want to help support this project. And as you'll see in the video, there's a huge wall for this. Some of the sponsors, if they want to step forward, will be able to put, you know, their name across the back of it. So, we're gonna work with them. Apparently, there's a site out there, and I'm just beginning to research on this, called Patronicity or something, but they're an organization that if we work through them, we may be able to receive a 50% match, up to $50,000 from MEDC. So, if you take the 175 minus the 60,000 we already have, we're looking for 115. If we can get 50,000 in sponsorship, another 15,000 match, it doesn't leave a whole lot to be received yet to make this project happen. So, if we can get the funding together, get approval of the resolution, today in your packet, resolution number two is a resolution asking you to authorize the city to work with the National Fitness Campaign to implement the construction of this outdoor fitness court and to make fitness free to community residents and visitors. And basically, the National Fitness Campaign is a San Francisco-based social enterprise that's dedicated to building healthy communities around the world, and they partner with cities and schools interested in providing best-in-class programs to promote activity and community wellness. And with that, if I could start that video.
We returned in 2018 and built partnerships with over 100 cities. We've raised over $15 million to help make fitness a priority across America, and we're just getting started. Let's make world-class fitness free for everyone. Hi, I'm Rich Manadji, founder of the National Fitness Campaign. National Fitness Campaign started in 1979 when we invented the fitness court. Our first two fitness courts were at Stanford and San Francisco, and the mayor and Wells Fargo Bank out behind the program, so we've opened fitness courts in 4,000 cities across America. We're introducing a new fitness court for the 21st century and launching a new National Fitness Campaign. The fitness court will allow you to use your own body weight to get a perfect workout. Our Seven Movement 7-Minute System allows you to get a full-body workout in just seven minutes. Forty-five seconds of work at each station, followed by 15 seconds of rest. The system is progressive, so people of all fitness levels can use it. Easy or hard, it will work for everyone. You can come to the fitness court and do any workout. If you're training for a tough runner, or if you're running a marathon, the fitness court will work for you. You can download our mobile app, learn our routines, and take some of the fitness challenges. This will allow you to compete on the fitness court against your own score and against your friends. NPA partners and sponsors will be providing exciting new elements in 2019. Digital training moves to Apple Watch audio guides. Regional training camps in 18 cities. Fitness court classes nationwide. The Fitness Court Challenge Series with local, regional, and national events. We're joining forces with city partners to build 200 fitness courts across America in 2019. NFC provides $30,000 in grant funding to match city adoption and enrollment. National Fitness Campaign is a social enterprise, and I take no salary, so all the money we raise goes directly to building fitness courts across America. We see the fitness court as the next step in the evolution of outdoor infrastructure.
I think it's amazing.
I love the fact that this is here and it's bigger. It's awesome. You can go to time and kind of workouts here.
And at the end of the day, we all want to help the community, no matter where we live.
We have visioned fitness courts joining basketball courts and tennis courts as essential elements of healthy infrastructure in cities and schools. Our goals are big, but the need is great. We're excited to work with you to build fit communities. Join us as we showcase the results of 100 cities who've partnered with us in 2018. Let's make world-class fitness free for everyone.
Okay, so basically, and you can see in the picture, the court, you know, would be something similar to that. I think they offer different colors for the rubber matting and, you know, obviously the painting of the wall and the different features on it. But that's what we're working towards constructing over in the Celebration Park area, and if we can get the funding put together, we'd hope to get that. It shouldn't be a long project, once the funding's in place, probably just a couple weeks, a couple days to excavate, you know, pour the concrete, you know, five to seven days, let the concrete cure, and then attach the features to it, so. And I did do some research that I can tell, right now, there's only, that I know of, seven, you know, municipalities or, you know, counties within the state that actually have one of these fitness courts, and that's Garden City, Brownstone, Wayne County, Big Rapids, Canton Township, Allendale, and Royal Oak. So, I think it'd be great for City of Saginaw to be the first one in the Great Lakes Bay region to install one of these and get it into use. I think that'd be positive for Saginaw with everything else that's going on in the community. So, I think it's a great project, and I'm just asking for your support to adopt the resolution tonight.
Are there any questions from council?
You mentioned the group Patronicity. My memory is, we received some information about them in one of our presentations at the MML Conference. I'm sorry, I can't point you more directly at it, but it seemed like one of the presenters there was also trying to acquaint us with them. So, I don't know if we have something to add to that or not.
Yeah, I hope it works. I mean, up to $50,000 match would be great, so.
Any others? I do have one concern. I like the idea of being in Celebration Square, but it's also near a skateboard park, and I know skateboarders tend to use any place they can to practice, and I'm worried about that being an issue for this park being abused.
Yeah, right now, what I'm hoping is, and I've since gone out and walked the area, and it looks a little low, but my initial thought, because obviously when I was thinking about this fall, winter, was to put it, if you imagine coming into Celebration Park from Ezra Rust, heading south, and in that first drive, having it be to the left of what would be the Raptor Center, but in that grass area, which is geographically a lot further away from the skate park area, and, you know, have some separation of green space to keep the skateboarders from being able to come onto it versus being right next to it. So, if you can imagine, instead of being in that southeast area by the skate park and the splash park, have it be more in the northwest area, of north, actually, north of the parking lot. So, kind of between the parking lot to Celebration Square and the actual Garber, you know, the Garber Tennis Court area and that green space area there. But I gotta also look at the floodplain issues and whether we're in the floodplain, and I'm trying to stay out of the floodplain, so I don't need floodplain permits and add extra costs. But, I mean, if we end up doing something, we can always look at adding some type of ollards or, you know, to try to discourage, you know, because that is a beautiful skate park, and hopefully, they'd rather be over there where they can do a lot more than they... But I do, I do hear what you're saying.
Okay. Anything further? All right. Oh, yes. Mayor Protem.
I only have one concern. You know, we have hard winters. Are we taking the equipment up? What are we doing in the winter months? Are we covering the whole park? I'm not if we could do that. So, are we taking it up?
I mean, I would look at taking down, if you notice that there's some, the pull-ups and all that are stationary, you know, heavy-duty steel mounted to the concrete. We would leave all that up, but any of the cables for the, you know, the little push-up, you seen the little circles? I'm not a gymnast or anything. But, you know, some of the stuff that is not really mechanical, but that, you know, we would look at taking that stuff down in the winter, which wouldn't, you know, and then if you looked down there, some of the bands or the connectors looked like they could be unscrewed and stuff removed, but we'd look at putting something more permanent. Hopefully, nobody would want to damage any of that or cut the cables and, you know, remove stuff, but we'll, you know, I gotta imagine any of that stuff wouldn't be that expensive to, you know, majority of it's in the concrete and the stationary features for the costs.
Thank you, as always, for trying to make us healthy.
I just wish this was 20 years ago and I could still use it, you know.
Councilmember Boss.
Are we gonna have an endowment fund or something like that to take care of repairs? I mean, once you put stuff in, are we gonna keep it up?
Yeah, what I'd be looking to do is raise a little bit more than what's needed for construction and get that over at the community foundation to act as an endowment, or, you know, and as any maintenance or replacement of stuff, we would go to that fund to maintain it.
Okay. Anything else? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. I don't think there's an age limit on the fitness park.
We'll see you after every day.
And then, we did, you know, there's been a lot of talk about streets and roads construction, and if you'll recall, we did have additional funding that we've been receiving, because the legislature did have a plan, Governor Snyder did, to increase funding. So, there's been incremental funding increases for road construction the last year or two years, and I think it's set to go up again this year, but it still is not anywhere close to what we need, which I don't think any program would provide what we really need. But I think Phil and Beth London have been doing a really good job, and Simeon Martin as well, coming up with new ideas and new ways to work on the roads. We're doing a lot more with our staff, and we're glad to have Beth here tonight to give council an update on the next year's planned project. So, with that, we'll ask Beth to come up and provide her update.
Good evening. Thank you, City Manager Morales. I normally come to city council and talk about what we're gonna do this year and what we did last year, but this year, we're gonna skip what we did last year. I hope everybody's driven those roads and is aware, and we're gonna talk a little bit about some of the things that City Manager Morales touched on, the condition of the roads Road conditions, we're gonna talk about PESR ratings, the existing condition, the cost, what we would think to return all our roads to good condition, and then our various revenue sources, our projects for this summer, both road and other construction, and then future Many of you have heard me talk about PESR ratings, and PESR ratings are what we, we rate the roads. We're required to rate our federal aid-eligible roads every other year, and we're required to rate our local roads every three years. And I just provided some information on the rating, the condition, and the suggested maintenance for those conditions, and then some costs for those maintenance items. We have different things that we do to concrete roads, and we do asphalt roads, and, but again, the rating system is pretty much the same. The minute we reconstruct a road, the very next year, it's a nine. It is no longer a 10. Just keep that in mind. One and two just simply usually suggest that the base has failed, has a structural issue, and you need to reconstruct the road. Everything else in between, I don't want to ever imply that there's lines between this that we can't cross because it's gray. You know, we look at it, we come up with a fix, we try to follow these guidelines. So, the condition of our roads. We talk about federal aid-eligible. Those are the roads that we can spend our federal funds on. They are in better shape than our non-federal aid-eligible roads. Generally, our major streets are usually federal aid-eligible streets, but not always. Generally, our local streets are non-federal aid-eligible, but some of you may remember that 19th Street was a local street, but it was federal aid-eligible, and we did use federal funds to reconstruct it. I'm not gonna go over these numbers. It gets a little bit, well, we're just gonna remain positive. The green is growing. That's a good thing. But non-federal aid-eligible's in much worse, much worse shape, and that's because those are mostly our local streets, and that's really what we don't spend a lot of money on. Our streets foreman and his crews, you do a lot of repairs on local streets. We are trying to start doing a local street project every year, but it's generally next to a major traffic generator or, well, business district maybe, or someplace that has an economic value to fixing the road. So, we created this slide, and it's really not exact, because we're suggesting that if we took each road, took the rating, multiplied by the money of the average car... if we took each road, took the rating, multiplied by the money of the average cost for that fix, this would be what our cost is. And at the rate, the $3,780,600, that's what we spent this year in fiscal year 19 for road construction and repairs. That doesn't include fixing our bridges, so we do spend road money to fix our bridges. We do spend road money on non-motorized improvements. We are required to spend 1% of our Act 51 money on non-motorized improvements. But this just is to give you the idea of how daunting the task is.
Beth, this doesn't include, this would be a one-year fix.
Right.
So, if you figured, you know, the 20 years it would take to spend that money to do it all, you would probably quadruple that cost.
Oh, yes, yes. I mean, that's, because every year, each road is getting worse. And this is what City Manager Morales was talking about. We did have a gas tax increase. We did, we are paying more for our license fees, and we are getting more money, and this is the graph that represents that. And this is major street and local street together. And 19, obviously, that's estimated. We won't know until the end of the fiscal year because it's actually based on what is paid at the pump. This is additional revenue that we did receive. The first year, 2014, was because we had a tough winter, and the state legislature gave general fund money to all locals to pay, help pay for the excessive winter maintenance costs, more salt. People ran out of salt, we didn't run out of salt, but, and these are, that's what all of this money is. This year, that 827,802, that is being spent on the Millen Resurface Project that is going before you tonight, that contract. The rest of the money on that contract is, was budgeted. This is our federal road money, and it's a kind of a skewed graph for two reasons, two reasons. In 2017, we spent all of the, our MPO, our Metropolitan Planning Organization, we spent all of the urban local funds, and in 2018, the County Road Commission spent all of the funds. And, yeah.
I see this year's number, it looks like we and the county both received about an equal amount, then?
Yes.
Are we expecting that to continue, or might we be doing the trade-off again in some future years?
We traded that off only because they needed all of the money in 18 for Davis Road, which they didn't do. I think they postponed it, actually. They subbed in other projects, but we can do that. It's mostly to accommodate a large-priced project, which is what they had on Davis Road at the time.
We don't have a current expectation of doing this, but it could.
No, but what we have, the amount is going up about 2% a year right now, but we are in, we are in a year where we are doing a new tip, so 2020 is overlaps, the tip overlaps always by one year, it's a four-year tip. So, 2020 overlaps the two years. And last time the overlap happened, they ran out of money, so we want to get our projects obligated early, so we don't lose any funds.
Thank you.
And that's what happened in 2014. Both the city and the road permission did not receive any federal money.
Mayor Potem.
So, Ms. Beth, I just, you heard, you said they ran out of money. Who is that?
The state of Michigan.
Okay, so with the money that we overlaid and we borrowed, or loaned, or let the county get, have they finished Davison Road, or have they even started it?
They have not done Davis Road. What I understand is that in 18, they did different projects, and 19, they are now trying to utilize funds, their federal funds, and get a quick project on Tiddabowasi because they're having some right-of-way issues on Davis Road.
Thank you.
Our 19 project is Mackinac, it was obligated, so.
Thank you.
And then, the other spike I want to say, in 2013, when the state reallocated a million dollars that was unspent throughout the state, and the city's portion was a million dollars. And that's what you see in 2013, and we used it on West Remington, and we also used it to pay for some design of projects. Other funds, this is other funds we spend on roads. A lot of this is community development block grant funds. 2011, we had a safety grant for, actually, those are on the next page, but this is a list of some of the other funds that we received, only for roads. We very often get bridge funds, we typically get bridge funds every year, which is federal funds, but I'm only talking about roads because what I'm talking about is only the cost to fix the roads. It doesn't include maintaining all of our bridges, which we are obligated to do. Nothing much to say about this. 2017, we received a Transportation Economic Development Category F grant for Vets Memorial Parkway, and then we also received a Federal Lands Highway grant for Maple and Gabriel Road reconstruction with the bike path, and the Fish and Wildlife matched that grant. We didn't match it, we paid for the design only. And then, a lot of people always say, "How do you pick the projects?" So, I put this slide in just so, as a reminder for some of you, and maybe some of you don't know, we base it on street classification and traffic volumes mainly, but typically, we also would look at if it's in a central business district or near a major traffic generator such as a hospital, high school, and obviously, also base it on complaints. I listen to my streets foreman tell me he's spending a lot of money on a street, filling potholes, and he's wasting money in coordination of a project. If water and sewer maintenance has a project and they need to replace a water main, we try to coordinate the roadwork with them. Community benefits, that's really if it's next to maybe the Dow Event Center, the Hoyt Library, or Castle Museum, something, something like that, that's really important to the community. Ezra Rust or Fordney Street was kind of that way, it was with the Y and the Anderson Splash Park. So, what do we have for this summer? We, I'm not gonna go through this list, we'll go through each slide, but first, we'll talk about the roads. Whoops. And then, we'll talk about the other construction, bridges, yeah, sidewalk project in Old Jewell Island, Mackinac Street. Oh, I haven't even looked at this. But Mackinac Street's a reconstruction, it's already been bid, it's local contractor, Rhodey Brothers, and it's gonna be a three-lane HMA reconstruction, all-new curb and gutter, all-new sidewalk, all-new curb and gutter, all-new drive approaches, all-new ADA sidewalk ramps, drainage improvements, and new water main. That project is scheduled to start May 1st. It should be open, open to traffic in August. The road will be closed and detoured during construction, and that is our federal project. You'll see the $935,500 of federal road money there. Lapeer Street is our community development block grant project that is a reconstruction. It's partially a reconstruction because it's a four-inch water main. We are replacing that four-inch water main and upsizing it. Again, new drive approaches, new curb, new sidewalk, ramps, water main, and drainage improvements. Drainage improvements means new catch basins and sometimes new manholes. Again, contractor is Rhodey Brothers. Guess he was excited about staying in the area this year. It's an $856,000 budget. We're using two years of block grant funds, both 18 and 19, and construction is started, is scheduled to start at the beginning of May, and the road will be closed for, during We have this...
You have a question?
I understand there's some new cement or something that they're talking about using so that the water don't seep into the, you know, into the cement, you know, where they have it, where it angles out so the water go off of the road and come out. Are you guys using any of the new stuff?
New cement. I'm not aware of new cement.
I don't know if it's cement or asphalt. This road gonna be cement or asphalt?
This is gonna be asphalt. We very rarely are reconstructing in concrete.
Maybe it was asphalt I'm thinking about. Is it used in Milwaukee or someplace like that?
It might. Are you talking about maybe the Cape Seal where we're sealing the road?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, our Cape Seal project is something we've never done before, and we are doing it on West Michigan from the city limits to Jocelyn, and then Mason from Brockway up to Houghton. And they're gonna put down, first you put down a sealant, then you put the stone on top of it. Once that cures, they're gonna come back and put slurry on top of it, and the idea is by putting the, the first part, the, well, the emulsion, emulsion and the stone is called a chip seal, and that will help stop the reflective cracking from coming through.
Do you put anything on top of that?
It's just gonna be, it's like a very, it's called an ultra-thin overlay, but it's a very thin, it's not as thick as a typical layer of asphalt. So, it'll be a very thin emulsion.
I have one, and I'd like to follow up on the Lapeer Avenue. It's about 4.49 lane miles, but it's almost a million dollars, half-mile. So, is that because of the water mains? Since earlier, you talked about the mile, or your figure showed a mile would be about a million dollars, give or take. So, here we're talking a half-million. What's the difference here?
Yeah, that, yes, part of that is, whoops, 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 whoops. Yeah, the water main there is about $347,000 worth of that cost, yeah.
Yep, thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, Madam?
Beth, they're working on Lapeer Street now, so what are they doing? Fixing the water mains over?
Actually, Consumers has been out there. Consumers, both on Mackinac and Consumer, or Mackinac and Lapeer, Consumers Gas has been replacing their mains. Next week, Consumers Electric will be on Mackinac moving some poles, and they have four poles to move on Lapeer.
Okay.
So, that's who's out there right now.
Okay, so that's why they're out there working.
You might see, the surveyor might be out there marking, stationing, but I'm pretty sure it's Consumers that's out there right now.
It's Consumers. They're out there too. It's like, I'm like, okay, what's happening in the neighborhood? Okay.
The Cape Seal is about $211,000. It's our first one, we're gonna monitor that, see how it lasts. We like to do one every year. What we may do is decide, well, it's not gonna work on this, this road with this PESR rating, we might have to change it. We might want to do it on a street that has a different volume of traffic, but we have to start somewhere. That will start the middle of May, and traffic will remain open for that project. Millen Resurface, again, this is where we're spending the extra money that the state legislature gave us this year, 846,000, 26, I don't know, 46,000, 26,000. But this is a list of the streets. I'm not gonna go through the, I guess I can. North Wheeler, Grashit to Brockway, South Jefferson, Rust to Remington, East Remington, Sheridan to Owen, that's a concrete street, it has an asphalt overlay that's starting to peel off. We're gonna mill that off and re, and put an overlay back down. Congress from Brenner to North Charles. We left off at Brenner, we previously did up to Brenner. Woodbridge, that's that short piece between Grashit and Brockway, we're gonna try to save it. Elm between Grashit and Brockway. And then, we have a three-inch Millen Resurface on Fifth Avenue between Wadsworth and Washington. We are not doing six because there is a, if you're up towards Norman Street, you may see a dip in the road. There's a sewer repair that needs to happen before we can do that. And West Genesee between North Carolina and Hansett, we did two blocks around Schaefer, and now, we're gonna start to go west from there. And that is a $1.2 million project. A Saginaw Paving is the contractor. They're gonna start about the third week of May, and it will go into July. The streets will be closed for the most part. We're gonna try to keep at least the truck traffic off of it. Once they mill it, we don't really like to have the traffic on there until it's paved. The West Holland Avenue Railroad Crossing Approach Replacement, this, all we're doing is replacing a 20-foot concrete approach to the tracks. We're gonna cut out an extra foot on either side of the asphalt, and the railroad should, is going to come in when we're done and replace the asphalt between the tracks and the asphalt on either side of the tracks. And that, we're trying to schedule this for the time when we have some bridge work that's going to happen, starting in middle of April, and the Holland Avenue Bridge will be closed. We're providing the traffic control for this, and we're hoping it'll happen while our bridge contractor is on the bridge and already has the bridge closed. Otherwise, we will have our traffic crews install the traffic control. I have this in here, this is a hardened street reconstruction. We have been trying to get this design complete, but we recently added water main to this project, and met with the Lutheran Seminary to talk about some other issues we have out there, and I think we're, we're gonna, tomorrow, we're gonna be out there to look at some sewer, pop some manholes and look at some, the condition of the sewer, but our goal is to get it to, the design engineers trying to get us to, get it to us by April 15th, so we can still bid this out and start construction yet this year. This was just a slide I threw in, that, if you go back and look at your funding, you'll see that non-city funds, which would be CDBG, federal funds, that's what makes up the red. Everything else is our funding, which is Act 51 funds, and that's where we derived our $3,780,600 that we're spending this year.
We have a question. Councilmember Ball.
Excuse me. Do any of this money come out of the water fund?
If, on Lapeer and Mackinac, there is water money. If you look at those slides, it'll tell you how much.
Okay. Yeah, I did see how much, I was wondering, and all that comes out of the water fund?
Yes.
Okay, whenever we do a road and you have messed with the water, then the water fund pays for it?
The water fund pays for the water. Old Jewell Island, it's going along really well. For anybody that doesn't know, I mean, we have, we have grant items that include public bathrooms and separating the existing trail from the roadway, and also refurbishing or rehabilitating the pedestrian bridge. There's also a little bit of landscaping. Then, we have non-grant-funded items that are the stage and non-public restroom slash dressing room, and the rehabilitation of the existing trail between the roadway and the north pedestrian bridge. That contractor is Guyris Bot Construction. It is on schedule to be done. Work will be done in the middle of June, grass growth will be done in the middle of Say this again, Saginaw Parks contributed $105,000 for this project, which was much appreciated. The match for the pedestrian bridge and the, the trail portion is being paid with Act 51 road funds to help us use 1% of those funds on non-motorized improvements. Yeah, I should've said, to date, the pedestrian bridge is done. The curb has been poured between the roadway and the new trail, and they have now removed all of the old trail, and they've been grading and putting in stone for that. That's what they've been doing this, last week. We have a bridge project.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
So, a lot of the invasive species have been removed around the shore, right?
Yes.
It looks really wonderful.
That has nothing to do with this project. That is, I think that was a land conservancy, was it?
Yeah.
That was another one of the projects for that community, that was a sponsorship with the Community Foundation in Dalforing.
Okay.
That was just under $30,000. They're not done yet either, they got a little bit more work to do.
Looks great. Sorry to bring you off.
Sorry. We do have a bridge project this year that is being mainly funded with federal bridge funds, and it affects the Center Street, the Court Street, the Johnson Street, and the Holland Street Bridges. It's a combination of federal bridge funds from two years, and we're spending it in one year, so... So Center Street and Johnson Street, we're just extending the, the downspouts that are underneath the drains so that they don't, the water doesn't drip on the structural elements. This is kind of a maintenance issue. On Court Street Bridge, we're extending conduit that is draining handholds, electrical handholds again, so that it doesn't drip on the structural elements. Holland Street Bridge, we're doing repai, are doing repairs to the deck surface itself, the spalls that you see on the west side of the bridge when you're driving westbound. That project will take care of that. Contractor is C.A. Hall. And that project, well, it was supposed to start April 1st, but they have postponed starting until April 15th. I think everybody sees a traffic control out there. They had to do some bridge inspections to order some, or to have some fabrication started on some things. Now, the big one is that we'll maintain one lane of traffic on Court, Johnson, and the Center Street Bridges, but the Holland Street Bridge will be closed when the contractor is working. Uh, the detour will be, there'll be a detour set up. They cannot work on the Holland Street Bridge and the Court Street Bridge at the same time. And then the other thing that we have here, whoops. Because we were gonna close the Holland Street Bridge, we decided to fix the handholds on the bridge. There's 28 of them. They're like, for the street lighting, they're in the, the walkway and the sidewalk. And we tried to get it out at the same time the MDOT project was let, so that we could hopefully get the same contractor, and we did, C.A. Hall. And the great thing about this is it probably saved us about $20,000 because they did catch it and they did bid on it. Obviously, the timeframe is the same for, because it's on the Holland Street Bridge. Uh, we have a small project, ADA Sidewalk Replacement Project over west of Michigan Avenue, a couple blocks. It's on North Webster, North Harrison with the intersections of Madison, Rowan, Hayes. These locations were picked. We have two or three sidewalk complaints in the ramp areas in, on these intersections, and so we decided to expand it a little bit. There are no ramps over there in most of these locations. If there's a ramp there, we're not touching it. One or two of those intersections does have some ramps. Again, this'll be Act 51 money and help us to meet our 1% requirement for non-motorized improvements. I met with the Streets Foreman to try to pinpoint what projects he wanted to do this year and he did not really want to commit. Mostly because we committed to some things last year and then we called and said, we talked about Weber. Well, can you do Weber? So they pulled off what they were gonna do and they went over and did the concrete portion of Weber after the contractor milled and resurfaced the asphalt area. So I do know that he is over on Cumberland and he's gonna do some repairs over there. He's talking about North Carolina by the library. I don't know if he can fix that, but he's have to do some curb first. It's in pretty bad shape. And we have a couple other local streets that we're, we're going to do, including South Lawn. Um, we did Rose Lawn. He's gotta finish Rose Lawn this year and he's gonna go and do South Lawn as well. But stay tuned on that. I mean, he's got a big budget. He's got a lot of ambition and they just really wanna fix roads. Um, I put these slides in here because I wanted everyone to know what is planned in the future. Uh, we, our goal is to have an annual Cape Seal Project, an annual Millinery Surface Project, an annual ADA Sidewalk Grant Project, and an annual Sidewalk Replacement Project. Then we have our Niagara Street from the railroad tracks to Genesee is our next year's 2020 STUL funds. That's, that project was designed with 13 federal money and we have 10 years to build it. Uh, we also have.
Questions?
Yes.
Could you tell us a little more about that? Does it involve any redesign or is it gonna change to asphalt because?
It is going to change to asphalt.
Okay.
It's going to match what's south of the tracks. Um, the big thing that makes me nervous over there is what's underneath the road. We do have borings and there's a lot of, there's a lot of inorganic material. So we have a large, a large part of that budget for, um, to, to do subgrade undercut, which, you know, we may or may not use. It's always a miscellaneous item on our projects. But in this particular case, we budget, we've actually have a larger amount of that miscellaneous item. Adams and Cass between Michigan and Niagara, this has been added because there's a brownfield redevelopment that may happen over there. And we're gonna try to fix the roads and replace the water main. This is something that we were trying to do. We were also looking at Hancock, so you'll see Hancock further down the list. Couple of those streets are desperately in need of sidewalk, very similar to what we did in the downtown area when we came in and did a millinery surface project and did partial blocks of sidewalk, replaced curb and gutter. The difference over there is we have Cass, which if anybody's driven on Cass, you know the bricks. And that road is in very bad shape and also Adams is in pretty bad shape. Hancock might be a millinery surface, but it needs new sidewalk and there's some old cold vaults. Norman Street Bridge is a 2020 bridge project. It, it is happening. We have $830,000 with the federal bridge money. So we are going to be reconstructing the superstructure, the decking, and doing repairs to the substructure. So it'll all be new, it'll be new on the top. 23rd Street is a local street, but we are working with the railroad to rebuild that railroad crossing. They approached us, asking us if we'd apply for a grant to re, reconstruct the crossing. We don't get the money, but we have to apply for it. And it just so happened that the Streets Crew was going to go out there and millinery surface. So we said, and he kept saying he thought this job was too big. So I said, well, okay, don't do that. We'll try to do something with the railroad at the time that they're doing their project that will give us more points to score to get them to rebuild the crossing, to get their money from the state to rebuild the crossing. Uh, Wicks Park Conversion. We still have a goal to convert Wicks Park Drive to a multi-use pathway. The applications for a TAP grant are due in June. And we're gonna try to meet that requirement and get a grant application in. Uh, we have, I also have Ames on here, but it's just a one block from Hamilton to Niagara. There is a business owner there who's knocking on my door, complaining about the curb and the sidewalk and, and asking to have that fixed. 17th Street Rehabilitation from Walnut to Woodyear. That's our community development block grant application that we put in for 2021. We don't know that we'll get that money. This is just where, I'm just throwing it out there 'cause that's what we applied for. Baum Street Reconstruction Sewer Replacement, that also, there's a sewer there that actually has, holds water and we've had this on the list for quite a while. It was really a sewer project, but we agreed to rebuild the road. It's there by the Dialysis Center that's off of Hoyt. And then we also would reconstruct the water main at the same time. It's just one block. Mackinac Street from Alexander to Hamilton would be our 2021 federal project. Center Street in 2021, in December, we received notice that we did, we will be receiving federal bridge funds to do a rehabilitation on the Center Street Bridge. That includes some spalls, some expansion joints, and some structural elements underneath. In 2022, we have three federal projects. All rehabilitation, 'cause they're concrete roads, we would try to do concrete road repairs, do some milling and resurfacing, and some resurfacing where there is no asphalt now. That includes Remington from Southwater to Jefferson. So that is the other side of City Hall, on the one side of City Hall, all the way back to Jefferson. And then we also have East Holland, which is between Public Works and City Hall. And then also West Holland from Wa, Wa, oh, Woodbridge, all the way to Hamilton. And then Mackinac Street from Congress to Alexander would be our federal project in 2023. Now, those are what we've proposed to the MPO and to, which has to be passed by the state and by the feds for our federal projects.
Any questions? Mayor Protem?
Ms. Beth, on, I'm trying to find the slide. You're gonna work on Fifth Street and you said Sixth Street had a sewage problem.
Yeah.
And you can't work on Sixth because of the sewage problem. Is it Sixth and Norman, is it?
So milling and resurfacing, so we have a list, kind of. And I have two projects. One, one part was Wheeler between Grashit and Michigan. But I understand there's a, there's a sewer issue down by the railroad tracks. So I'm waiting for that, the water and sewer maintenance to fix that. So the next time we do a mill and fill project, that piece of roadway will be on there. Same, same thing goes for Sixth Avenue.
Okay.
Now Norman Street will also is on our list, but it won't be done until after the bridge is done. Because we need to reconstruct the bridge and then we'll come back and do the roadway.
So the side streets.
Yeah.
If we live it on a street that's not being used much, we're just gonna, we're gonna try to patch it as much as we can?
Yes. Well, my goal would be, the way I keep creating the budget, and I don't know how much everybody looks at it, but on the CIP is I would like to reconstruct one local street one year and then millinery surface 10 blocks or, or whatever the next year. But so far, I, I did get Madison done and now we're trying to do Harden, but we can't really seem to get traction on that.
Okay, you're fine. You're getting all the main streets around me. It's just the back street is getting left out. Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
I'd like to commend you guys for the work you're getting done. When I first came to City Council, they was complaining, big time. Everybody I talked to was some out in the streets. Now they complaining about they all getting tore up getting done. So I'd rather hear them say that than say what they used to say. 'Cause, you know, 19th Street looked like a, a foreign spot somewhere. I mean, it was terrible. And now that's a beautiful street right now. So I wanna commend you guys for the work you're doing and you did good work.
Yeah. The, the idea is if we can get some of these done, then we can keep, we can get on a cycle of milling and resurfacing every so many years. Um, and that's why I wanted to show you the PESA ratings. And part of the issue is that some of them, we're, we're milling and resurfacing a two. I mean, we're trying to do something because I, I, it's hard to just ignore it. But it might not last as long. It's probably not as cost-effective. But if we can get it on a cycle, maybe we can still save it. And then over time, rebuild, you know, one, one big project a year, like Mackinac, that's.
So does it seem like you're picking up more traction lately than you was years ago?
Oh, there's definitely, there, I feel a difference, but it's just there's such a huge need.
Yes.
Yeah, there's just a huge need.
Councilmember Olstas?
Yeah, um, it was a great presentation, very informative, and I was happy to see the rail, the railroad tracks are around there too, 'cause that's, that's a real bad dip. Everybody's always jotting around it or slowing down. A question, I see you're on, on Baum Street, but just a block over on Jefferson, 'cause you mentioned heavy traffic areas. So kinda like right between the Thompson to the Hoyt Avenue, there's kind of like a big dip in there too. And then also Warren gets traveled a lot too. I know there was some, I don't know what you did last year. There was a few blocks there that they patched up too, but I noticed that if there's any future plans or maybe.
Well, if you look at the CIP that we put together, it actually goes into future years beyond our tip. So I had to throw a project down there and I'm looking at Congress west of Schaefer as a reconstruct and then Jefferson from James going south. And we may try to millinery surface Congress. We, we keep doing this. Again, it's a one or a two. It's pretty bad. Jefferson has the old slate curb. When I see that old slate curb, I'd like to get rid of it, just so we have better drainage. So, no, Jefferson is on there. We're just not there yet.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Mill?
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to thank you for this level of information. I know it's useful to every council person here because we get these questions. When my street, when my street, why not my street this year? So we can tell them, we have a very comprehensive program laid out for the next three years. And I did have one question. You mentioned brick pavements. Do we have anything where we are, and I'm not suggesting, I just wanna know if it exists, trying to preserve any brick pavements in any historic areas or anything? I know many of them have already been damaged, probably beyond any value as a, okay, this is historic Saginaw because of previous repairs and replacements. But we do have a couple of blocks where we have solid blocks of brick pavement. Are we trying to keep any?
I'm not trying to keep it, but if somebody wants to spearhead that effort, I wouldn't be opposed to it. It's just that finding the money and then I think maintaining it over time. I don't know that those, well, that's, that's all I would say. I just think it's more maintenance and I'm really not looking to increase the maintenance. But I know it was discussed before. We have, and a lot of them are overlaid. I mean, Congress, that's the thing. We get in there, we start milling. Jefferson, South Jefferson, we milled last year, that was all brick. Brick was, we had to bring up the mill so that we didn't hit the bricks. We, a lot of those roadways have been overlaid that have bricks underneath. Uh, Lapeer has bricks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Beth.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth, and that concludes the management update.
Well, nobody ever shifts back.
Yeah, we're at the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall, on the city website, and on SGTV Channel 191. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda items, leaving room for exceptions.
I'll move.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Are there any exceptions? Any exceptions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's carried.
Next on your agenda is board commissions and committee reports.
One moment. Do we, just have it quiet a little bit up here? The reports. Okay, I had to catch myself. Are there any reports from city boards or commissioners? Any reports? Councilman Mill?
We had a meeting of the MBS International Airport Commission. And as the council's representative on that commission, I wanted to report, I was elected the vice chair there. That's per their bylaws, one member of each of the three cities on that commission provides one officer. So I am the Saginaw officer at this time.
Good. Any other reports? Hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. We are now at appointment of board and commission members.
The, there have been, I think it's six, six appointments or, or reappointments. We would need a motion to approve, leaving room for exceptions, and all support. It's been moved and supported. Are there any exceptions?
Three, please.
Councilwoman, Council, Councilmember Forbes says number three. Any other exceptions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's carried. Councilmember Forbes?
I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and approve of Vicki Dillon, but I'd like to, I'm just abstaining from the vote.
All right, and that would be due to potential conflict?
Yep. Um, I'm an employee of STARS.
All right. Um, we have a motion for number, number three. Can we have?
Oh, second.
Moved and seconded. Is there a discussion on the appointment of Vicki Dillon to the Saginaw Transit Authority? Any, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Need a roll call vote.
That's right. A roll call vote. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Millen?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Balls?
Yes.
Councilmember Olstas?
Yes.
Councilmember Forbes?
I'd like to abstain.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Bench is absent. Mayor Protem Moore?
Yes.
Member Scherzer?
Yes.
And Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Seven yes votes, one abstention, and one absent. And it's approved.
It is carried. We haven't gotten, Madam Clerk, next item?
That takes us to ordinance consideration and adoption. We have one on our agenda tonight. We have one on our agenda tonight, the ordinance to amend Sections 151.001 through Section 151.113, 116, excuse me, of Chapter 151, Housing Regulations of Title 15 Land Usage.
We need a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the ordinance? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Madam Clerk?
We are resolutions, Mayor. Our first one is establish a public employees' healthcare fund investment policy.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
It has been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried.
Our next ordinance, or resolution, is to implement an outdoor fitness court on Celebration Square.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried.
Mayor, we are at Ms. Lena's business.
Is there any other business to come before council? Yes.
I just want to make a comment, since we finished with the resolutions, that as one of the younger councilmembers and avid Y member, I just want to give the city, commend the city for their efforts, it's a small-scale infrastructures like this, and Phil, what you guys are doing is exciting, and the investment and what it's going to do for scenery and for that area over there, I am very excited for. And I'm sure some of the credit unions, and some of the banks, and some of the healthcare facilities and doctors around here would gladly invest in it, so just want to send my, thank you for bringing this to Saginaw.
Any, yes, Councilmember Balls?
I just wanted to let you, the city council, know that the Wannagast Credit Union is donating three bikes to the city of Saginaw. We're going to give everybody a ticket, anybody that works for the city of Saginaw is available to win one of these bicycles. The HR manager has the tickets, and he's going to get them out to all the employees, and we're going to give away three bikes, so they can ride off in the sunset.
Not yet. Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to note, Mr. Mayor, that Covenant Healthcare is having a open interviews tomorrow for environmental, and also for nutrition services, it's from 5:00 to 7:00 at 700 Cooper, you're asked to bring a resume, and you will be fingerprinted and drug screened after you successfully pass the interview.
Very good. Any other additional business? Hearing none, is there a motion to?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. We are returned.